Welcome to the January 22nd, 2025 meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. So we'll call the order and we'll ask for Commissioner Dur to have a moment of silence and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just got to wish Joan a happy birthday. So we'll start out with number four, review and approve the agenda. So we have motion and a second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Moving over to five, the commission work sessions and number A, letter A, legislative updates. Hello.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alexa Muller, Senior Deputy State's Attorney with the Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. Just wanted to give a little introduction about myself because I don't believe I've had the chance to meet Commissioner Dur. I have met Commissioner Wyffenbach in passing and I do know Commissioner Hadcock and Commissioner Drews. I've been with the State's Attorney's Office for about five years. I've had experience in the Criminal Department as well as the Civil Department. I took a hiatus from the Civil Department to help out our office and the Criminal Department for about half of the year last year. So there's some gaps in my knowledge about what's going on in planning. I'm doing my best to keep up. But I do have experience in the Legislature as well. I know as far as legislative updates go, there's not a lot to give you today because the Legislature just convened fairly recently. The last day to drop bills, I believe, is in two weeks. So there could be several hundred more that come through in the next couple of weeks that have something to do with planning and zoning. To the best of my knowledge, the most applicable bill that I've seen come through has to do with, and again, my gaps in my knowledge here, there was, I believe, a hybrid facility with solar energy, I believe, called YaroTech that came before the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners with extensive debate, and I believe there is a new committee meeting on the same. House Bill 1008 has to do with that particular issue. It was introduced by the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission, and the change in the law is to Section 49, 41B, 2. It amends the law to provide an energy conversion facility that is designed for or capable of generating 100 megawatts or more of electricity. It also further defines a hybrid facility, which I understand YaroTech to be one of those, so this law would encompass YaroTech as it relates to that type of megawatt capacity. Other than that, there's not a lot of bills that relate to planning and zoning that have been dropped thus far. Like I said, there's plenty of time for more things to come forward. I'm just not sure that those issues are the forefront of our legislators' minds at this point. I do know that there are a lot of freshmen coming into this Legislature, so I'm not sure, again, that that's necessarily at the forefront of their minds or their constituents' minds, but that's the update I have for you for the Legislature. Thank you.
Here. Commissioner Hadcock.
Ms. Alexis, so the hybrid issue with the winded solar facilities, they want to regulate them instead of having the counties do it?
No, I don't believe that is the intent of the bill. I believe it's just to further define what a hybrid facility is under the law.
But not to do anything with, you know, taking away our rights or anything as a county or?
No, I just, this particular section of the law is defining things. I don't believe that it has anything to do with taking things away from the counties.
Thank you, Ms. Alexis.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Hadcock. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Drew?
Yeah, I think that the YaroTech facility, when we, what I made the call actually to the PUC months ago, they said this would be the first hybrid facility in the state, and so they were looking at how they were going to regulate it, so I'm glad that they brought something forward.
Any other questions? Thank you. Brittany, you have a question or? Perfect.
Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. I just wanted to kind of give a backstory of how it got to the Legislature. When we were meeting with YaroTech and when I had reached out to the PUC, the attorneys from the PUC responded saying that YaroTech needed to do a declaratory action on it to see if it would have to be, and I think this is the PUC's response to YaroTech's request.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions?
No other questions? We'll move on to B, proposed ordinance amendments.
I'm going to bring these up.
Is that you, Brittany?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. These will go up on the screen?
Yes.
Perfect.
So our first one is the data center. Looking at data centers, the demand for data centers is increasing and I guess the intensive nature of the utility requirements are pretty significant, and so staff just wanted to take a look at them and propose an ordinance amendment in the instance that we would ever get a request for one. We do have quite a bit of heavy industrial zoning on that South 79 corridor, just south of Lamb Road, so we wanted to take a look at it. And we also put in this Urban Land Institute. They did kind of a paper review of these data centers and what they are and kind of a way that counties and cities can take a look at regulating them. I did some research in South Dakota, and it looks like Grant County is one of the only counties that does actually have an ordinance for data centers. So that was something that we're going to look at and just let this board know. Like I said, I'm not sure, because we are not a utility provider, and there's a lot of water that's required, so our only utility provider, or our main utility provider in the county is Rapid Valley Sanitary District. And in his district, there's not a lot of heavy industrial zoning, but just in the instance that something would happen or there would be a request, we would like to have some kind of ordinance in place to address it. So is there any questions? This is a good review paper on these data centers. It gives a good back history and some different guidelines on how counties and cities can regulate them.
Mr. Chair. So Brittany, do you know of any data centers that are proposed for any place in South Dakota at this point?
I have only heard possibly one in Rapid City, but I'm not sure if that's actually confirmed or if it's coming.
Here.
Rapid City did do an ordinance for data centers.
They did, okay. Commissioner Hadcock?
So what you're asking is if you could move forward with an ordinance on this today, and then we don't have to make a motion, we're just saying we agree with moving forward?
Yes, this is just kind of an update for the board to let you know some of the things that are coming down the pipeline as far as like planning issues and ordinances that you'll see in front of you in the future.
So with your research in the water problem and how much water this takes, I mean, it's going to have to be in certain areas. Does it need to be close to the city? Is it, I guess, what I'm looking at is, do we have the capability of doing these kind of data centers in the county, lacking some of the infrastructure already?
It would depend. They can use an off-grid or a well system, but that would have to go through the state, through the water right system. So it's possible. I don't know if it would happen, but it's not impossible for it to happen, and we just wanted to address it just in the instance that it did come about, just so we were prepared if it did come in front of us.
And the main thing, if any other counties in other states, what other problems that they have with data centers in their counties instead of making them in the cities, that kind of stuff. Even a member from Solar and Wind, we had the same issues that we probably could have done a little bit more research on county areas, and I was on that board, so I'm not blaming the Planning Department. We're just saying that, let's look at some of the counties that have data centers and stuff and make sure we're ahead of that game.
Yes, and most of the issues is electricity. It's a huge pull on the electricity. Aesthetics, a lot of times they're like big concrete-type buildings. A lot of them too are over the height, so our maximum height is 35 feet. A lot of them are much over that. So it's kind of all of the infrastructure that goes with it and the security.
And what that means if they make a huge building and then empty it later, I mean, what that does for an area like, as you see from ShopCo and other areas, making huge parking lots and different stuff like that when they decide to empty them, that won't be in the city, that'll be in the county. So we need to think about some of that stuff when you're doing buildings and things like that that are massive. And like I said, do we have the infrastructure and do we need that? I'm not against business, but that kind of infrastructure or not infrastructure, that kind of building, where if it's vacated, so.
Yeah, most of those buildings are 80,000 to 100,000 square feet. I mean, they're
That's what I'm saying.
Large. So there's stormwater issues and, you know, a lot of those other issues that come with those large-type buildings. Parking and traffic isn't necessarily an issue because there's not a lot of employment associated with them. It's just mostly the footprint and the utility requirements. Thank you.
I believe, Brittany, you talked about the Highway 79 corridor over there where they do have all those capabilities. They have the water, they have electricity. It's like the perfect storm over there, so it would be important that we really look hard at this and maybe get moving on it if we do have an opportunity. So somebody comes in and looks at us and go, hey, these guys are prepared for it. You know, we talk about the things you talked about, the building heights, all that stuff, because that is a corridor. They were going to put the battery plant in there, but I haven't seen any movement on it. And, but they have the electrical grid over there, and they have city water over there. They have, and I don't know if it's annexed into the city yet or not, I'm assuming it is?
A portion of it is, but a portion of it, south of Lamb Road, is still in the county.
Okay, perfect, okay. So this is a great idea, so.
All right.
Any other questions from the commission? No other questions? Did you want to move on, Brittany?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is the comprehensive plan viewed at 2040 amendments. We have been working on this. Some of the members of this board can remember, at a previous planning session, we've been working on these sections quite a bit, but we wanted to update Commissioner Dur and Wyffenbach on these. And it also took quite a bit of time to update our future land use maps. Staff took considerable time, basically going parcel by parcel to look at them. So some of the major changes that'll be in our comprehensive plan, which will require changes in our zoning ordinance as well, is that our low-density residential district right now, it's a half-acre lot size, and that seems to be kind of an item of contention when members from the public come and ask for that rezone. So we're going to propose a one-acre lot size, because one acre in the hills would allow for a well and a septic on the lot. A half-acre lot size, you have to have community water and then a septic. So we're proposing to change it to a one-acre minimum instead of a half-acre minimum. And then we're going to look at renaming the Suburban Residential District to Suburban Residential 1, and then renaming their Urban Residential District to Suburban Residential District 2. There will be no significant material changes. The reason for that is when we look at the urban residential and when we advertise for those, there's some misconception among what that urban residential district really is. When you look at the urban residential district in the city, it's for significantly higher density, bigger density, or higher height buildings, things like that, and that's not what ours is. So I believe that it's a nomenclature issue and it's not appropriate for what our actual district does. The only difference between these two is the lot size. This is a 6,500-square-foot lot size, this is a 6,000-square-foot lot size, and this allows 20-foot front yard setbacks, and this is 25 front yard setbacks. Typically, you won't see these zoning districts except for the Rapid Valley area where they have public water and sewer. We have moved away from allowing this kind of district at all in the hills when they don't have public utilities. And then the Section 211 is, we're looking at combining the Commercial and Highway Service District. Really, the only significant difference between these two districts was some highway frontage, which commercial should have some frontage on a main road anyway, but Highway Service District allowed amusement uses. And with some of those that have been in place, working with the fire administrator and some of the issues that have come up, removing those amusement uses and making them conditional uses in the Commercial and Highway Service District, so we're going to combine that district into just one commercial district. And then we're going to create a neighborhood commercial district, which would allow some more commercial development in areas like the valley where it isn't such an overarching large commercial uses, where there are more neighborhood-type, smaller retail, neighborhood-type uses, I think, like dental offices, medical offices, things like that, like low-impact. And then our planning unit development districts, we got rid of, got away from these, and we're looking at bringing them back, but making sure that they're actually a mixed-use development and having more restrictions on them, because a lot of times in the past, we saw that people that wanted certain uses would just ask for a PUD, and it would actually create spot zoning issues, instead of actually being a true PUD, which actually allows mixed uses. We do have some proposed development and some meeting with developers that this kind of planning unit development district would be the best, instead of having, trying to rezone certain parcels to all different kinds of zoning districts. And then right now, we have a PUD overlay, which initially is just a multiple CUPs. And working with the State's Attorney's Office, we are looking at changing that nomenclature to a multiple-use permit, and then adding that to actually Section 510, which is conditional use permit, so moving it out of the planning development and into the conditional use permit, because there is some connotations like how these are done with statutes, so moving them into the conditional use permit is more appropriate.
Can I ask a question, Brittany?
Sure.
So you talked about neighborhood commercial. You took out beauty and barber shops that are regulated through the state already?
Took them out of, let's see.
Or did?
I think we added them into neighborhood commercial, didn't we?
No, you took them out. It's crossed out.
Let me see.
You put salon service or gas stations also are taken out? Or maybe you added them?
Let's see.
Salon and beauty or barber shops?
No, we added them, salons.
Okay, that's what the red is?
Yep, those are additions.
And service.
So what happened is the beauty or barber shops, instead of having it, we just called them salons, because you could have a nail salon, you could have a beauty salon, you could have those kinds of things, so this was, we just kind of cleaned up the language, essentially.
So if you put a, what do you call them? They have multiple uses.
Like a recreational resort or a specialty resort?
No.
Oh.
When they have, Jesus, what are they called? When you have multiple businesses.
Oh, like a strip mall?
Strip mall. Tired. Any of those uses basically would be in neighborhood commercial, wouldn't they?
As long as it's under the 2,000 square feet of gross floor area, so if it's a smaller type area, yes.
What if it's, what is the norm for strip malls' square footage?
It just depends. I think some of the larger ones would have to go in commercial. These are meant to be a little more palatable to the neighborhoods, because a lot of times we've seen when people want to rezone to a commercial district, there's, you know, when you look at the commercial district, there's 46 different uses that could be in a commercial district, and that's kind of overwhelming, because once it's zoned to that, it could be any of these things. So that's why we wanted to look at a more low-impact, more palatable kind of district. So people that wanted to do some of these low-impact didn't have to go to such a, the commercial zoning district. And our neighborhood commercial right now is a conditional use permit, and it's very difficult to be objective with how those are operated. So actually, having a zoning district would be more appropriate.
I would just like to know the average square footage of those, just to make sure that we are basically following what the city or whatever has, and why I'm saying that is so we don't want another process with a CUP and another process with coming to us for a variance, because, you know, they'd like to have, like they have those beer and wine places that are in neighborhoods and stuff, and they might have like the brewery or whatever and stuff, and maybe not the brewery, but you see what I'm saying, with the square footage. Just the main thing is be careful of the process where we're not putting multiple areas where you have to go through the planning in order to put neighborhood commercial, because we'd like to do, remember, we were looking at that before, down Twilight, that area, put some neighborhood commercial, be cognizant of that, so we don't make a process where people really go, okay, if that's all we can do for square footage. Anything that would be basically neighborhood commercial friendly, we want to make sure that that square footage, if it's bigger, that we're not stopping or making too much of a process just to go through where they could go in somewhere else.
Okay. We did look at other ordinances in this 2,000, and I'll kind of look at, look back where that number comes from. My guess, it probably comes from parking requirements and then the vehicles traveled. So a lot of times, when they look at like traffic and like roads, they look at the type of business, the size of business, and what their traffic impact is going to be, and a lot of times it's by square footage and things like that, so that might be where that number came from, but I'll verify.
Especially if we're going to put it like on a major thoroughfare, it would be Twilight or different areas, is there exceptions to that, depending if it's commercial or neighborhood commercial? So just when you're mixing those, just make sure the process, like I said, we don't want too many Ts and Is have to be dotted on some of it. I mean, we want to protect the neighborhood, I get, but most of the time when we put stuff in neighborhood commercial, it's something that makes sense anyways.
I'd say, just to add to that, a 2,000-square-foot building would be roughly a standalone office or something. If you get into, you know, if you're familiar with like the Timmins Market area right across the street, that little casino over there, that's about 6,000 square feet, divided into four pieces, about 1,500 square feet a piece, so if that gives you an idea of what they're talking about, but they have zoning for that, so you're just trying to match the zoning so they don't have to keep coming back to you. That's exactly the purpose you're trying to meet, so. Does this go through a process then? Like, do we have to present it to the public and, because especially the people that are being, having the zoning changed, so?
Yes, actually, we are working with our marketing director and the HR department about doing Facebook, doing some meetings, putting everything out, basically doing information blasts, doing some PIO and everything on this before we even bring it to the Planning Commission.
That'd be the whole comprehensive plan altogether and looking at?
Nope, it's just going to be this section, just the land use section.
The sections that are being addressed then?
Yes, it's just
You've identified them then, basically? Okay.
It's just going to be this land use section, it's not going to be any other sections of the comprehensive plan, it's just the land use and then our future land use map that's associated with it. But we are working with the HR department to get the information out and do some meetings prior to our Planning Commission meeting, so there's going to be information blasts, so to speak, so we're working with them to do that.
Anything you can make the zoning easier, and when people come to look at something, they know that they can do something or not, makes complete sense. Do we have other questions over here? No other questions?
One more.
Commissioner Hadcock?
So, also, Brittany, on the comprehensive plan, I'd like to see how many changes we've made to that comprehensive plan of the old one, because why I'm saying that is, we already told you, Jason Britney knows what's coming. So city and county, I was on comprehensive plan, and I'll just tell you, I don't think it hardly ever followed the comprehensive plans, it just depended, it was politically and business-driven. So at this point, I'd like to see in our county how many changes that we, you know, we have a comprehensive plan, and what have we changed on that comprehensive plan in order to move forward? Is it, you guys will be able to tell, that tells you how a comprehensive plan works. Why I say that, it's nice to have a guide, and it's a guide, it's not set in stone, we got that, but a lot of times, like I said, since I've been in here, which is a while, it's politically and business-driven, so those changes should be probably noted on every area that we have changed, so people know, number one, maybe we need to, since we're looking at the future, maybe those areas, we need to visit with the commission a little bit more about what the goals are for the future in those areas. So at least the people buying properties and doing stuff to a certain extent, we're not always going to make everybody happy about what's going to happen in their neighborhood instead of come in and say, oh, now we have a rendering plant about a mile away or whatever. I mean, some of this stuff you cannot foresee, but other things, yeah. So they're prepared as well, it's only for the public's sake as well, to know what's going to happen in their area. And I think also, if we have, if we decide we're having Twilight and we want to do commercial or neighborhood commercial, that also shows people, you know, because that area, out of all the places, needs some commercial, so they don't have to go, kids and families don't have to go to 44 just to get something to drink or get gas or anything, so just things to think about on the future of where we're going and where we should go, and that we also are pushing that, because the east side seems to be where everybody's building and doing whatever they need to do over there. Sounds like Safeway might come in, that's pretty amazing, but let's look at that area so we don't start putting development all down that road when it's too late for that comprehensive plan to be moved forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Hadcock. Any other?
Yes, actually, to address her comments, Jason and I actually went through the future land use map, and actually, Jason spent a month probably going parcel by parcel just doing that, looking at what roads they were off of, what, you know, access there was, things like that, where we are seeing development, where we're seeing infrastructure. With Rusty's expansion of Rapid Valley Sanitary District makes a huge difference in areas in the valley for higher-density development and things like that, and commercial development. So we did that, it was very onerous, but that was part of the process to bring us here, and then that's what's going to be in front of the public. And with COVID and that big spike in development has changed how our county has been developing, hence why we've been in front of you asking for comprehensive plan amendments, so.
Yeah, so TIPS and things like that for infrastructure, because now we're having what the city calls multi-areas, where we're getting spot zoning basically, or changing zoning. What that does is, for the valley, you already know, the infrastructure's starting to be disturbed enough where it's really affecting us and going to cost this county some major money in order to fix some of those areas. We could say they could annex in and they can do whatever, but we already know the reality of that, so let's just plan ahead, because that's the biggest area we see for development, and we show people with Rusty's, his comprehensive plan of where we should be going in the future, and then try to direct people to those areas that already have infrastructure instead of reinventing the wheel and costing the county, like I said, a lot more money.
Thank you. I think we're heading down that road, and we'll have more input when it comes to that, right? Okay.
Yes, this will actually go out for public. We'll try to have some meetings, working with, you know, marketing, and then it will be in front of the Planning Commission and the board, so there'll probably be several meetings coming up. So that's our big push for the beginning of this year, are these changes.
Is there a timeframe?
We're hoping to have these, probably the meetings and things like that started in mid-February, so March probably be in effect prior to summer.
Okay.
So.
Do you want to move on to Drainage Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
And so this presentation, I think a couple of Commissioners have seen before, but we just wanted to update the new members on kind of where we are and what we're, where we are looking at going, so.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Alexa Muller, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. As Brittany said, I do believe I gave this presentation a while ago, just to give an update on what's going on with county drainage. It's very clear there are issues going on with drainage in the county. There's issues with development in the Three Mile Plating District, development draining into county drainage from city projects. All of these things, I believe, all of the Commissioners are very well aware of. It's very prevalent and obvious in many areas of our county. Previously, at a planning workshop, we discussed our options. To give a little bit of background, there is a joint drainage commission that is called the Western Pennington County Drainage District that is in place right now. the Western Pennington County Drainage District that is in place right now. That joint drainage commission is in conjunction with the City of Rapid City and the City of Box Elder. However, there have been talks since the early 2000s about dissolving that commission. It's clear, based on the issues that we're having, again, that are prevalent and obvious, that we're not really working great together at this point as a joint drainage commission. So the option number one, which would be to attempt to revive the joint drainage commission, I believe that's an option that we've explored previously, the commission has previously explored that, and I don't believe that we're ready to go down that road. The second option is to dissolve the joint drainage commission, which is in the works at this juncture, to form a county drainage commission. This is an option in the law that would allow the Board of Commissioners to appoint a commission of three or more members that wouldn't be the board themselves. It needs to be an odd number of members, and they need to meet, I believe, at least every six months. There's a lot more nuance to the law than that. Last we talked, and I believe this was in January of last year, the plan was to go with option number three, which is to dissolve the joint drainage commission, and the Board of Commissioners would control all of the county drainage issues. That's an option under the law, it's actually probably easier to do than to form a county drainage commission and have you guys oversee a bunch of other people. There are more powers that go along with that. Next steps at this point, again, I, as I said, there was a gap in my time with the Civil Department, I was with the Criminal Division for about six or seven months. There is an agreement that is being worked on by myself and Jay Alderman that will be going out to the City of Rapid City and the City of Box Elder shortly to dissolve the drainage commission, so the next steps would be, after that is dissolved, for the Board of Commissioners to then take control of the county drainage issues. I do have an internal memorandum that I can send, and submitting it to Board members as they see appropriate.
I always wanted to make a couple of comments on this, and I think it would be appropriate to explain why we want to dissolve the commission, simply because it doesn't work, is that correct? And then want to form our own commission so we have a little bit of control over the drainage issues that we're experiencing in, in the county, and particularly in Rapid Valley. I think the, the commission was, we had a fellow here who wanted to develop part of Rapid Valley over there, and this is real significant that this drainage commission be in place before they get the opportunity to do that. What happens is the city intervenes, and because of the plating district, and they allow things to happen that affect what's happening in Rapid Valley, and then the county ends up having to try to fix the mess that they leave behind. It was mentioned a little bit to the fellow that came here about the drainage that goes through the racetrack, this is one that's particularly in dire need of the drainage commission to, and I think, and you can explain this to us, on this drainage commission, if the, if we have our own commission of whatever, I think we talked about three people, was that it?
So that would be, if we go with option number two, which is to form a county drainage commission, which the Board members would not actually be on. But the third option, which I believe is the option that the previous board had discussed and wanted to, and given us direction to go for, is that the board themselves would operate as the county drainage commission.
Do we have like a hybrid, where we have like maybe one from our, from the BOC, and then the rest from at-large or something in Rapid Valley, or?
I don't understand that to be an option under the law, I believe it's either a commission that the board appoints or the board themselves.
Yeah, so the board can, the board can appoint a commission?
Correct.
Okay. And then can you explain what this, why forming this commission is important to, to make sure that we have control? Can you explain a little bit of that?
Sure.
How does that affect Rapid City's decision-making process?
Well, I believe the points that you previously just discussed, Commissioner Wyffenbach, are the reason why we do need a drainage commission, and the county needs to control what's going on in the county. To the extent that we can control what's going on in the city, you know, we can't, right? We can still attempt to work with the city on issues that are impacted within the Three Mile Plating District, we can do that without having the joint drainage commission we have. Based on the history that I've reviewed extensively minutes from these previous meetings of the joint drainage commission, it's very clear, we just don't want to work together on these issues anymore.
And I think we've agreed on that, if it doesn't work, we're going to change it, we're good with that, but I think, the point I'm trying to make to make sure we understand up here is that if we have this commission, this drainage commission in place, that can stop the city from making these arbitrary and capricious decisions based upon whatever they decide. We, we will actually have a say in it, like say if they want to develop Quall Park, and it's a drainage issue for the Drainage Board, the Drainage Board can say, no, can't do that, the state law allows that to happen, I guess, is what I'm saying? They allow us to step in, maybe Brittany can answer that question a little bit, too. I think, hopefully I'm not convoluted the message.
No, I think there is a statute that says that if they drain into us, that they would have to come in front of this board to get approval.
Okay.
And this board would have the option to either consult with a consultant, like another drainage engineer, like an independent consultant, you guys could direct that and make the determination of what improvements that you would accept.
But as it stands right now, we don't have that opportunity to do that, okay? So we're putting a stopgap in place to protect the citizens in Rapid Valley that are getting flooded out currently, and there's been nothing to address that. This park's going to put another strain on that same issue, so this commission can stop that.
Correct, it could put opportunities in place for people to be heard for, for things to be put in place to either stop it or to make it feasible and appropriate for drainage issues.
So how do, how do we move forward? Can we, like, can we create the board right now? Can we make a chair for the board or anything like that?
We can't. So at this point, like I said, I, I've had a gap in my time with the Civil Division, I am, we're just about done with the agreement, it's a joint powers agreement between the municipalities and the county to dissolve the joint drainage commission. That needs to be signed and enacted by all parties, including the City of Rapid City, the City of Box Elder, and Pennington County.
They have to sign it to dissolve it?
Correct. My understanding is that that's what everybody wants to do, based on the history of this commission, nobody really wants to, to play ball in this arena anymore, so I believe, I don't believe that'll be a hiccup. After that, after it's completely dissolved, that agreement is completely put in place, then we can work on forming our own drainage commission.
Commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Brittany, I've got a question.
Okay, thank you. Brittany?
All right, so I'm assuming if you had a staff recommendation, and I didn't catch all of this in the previous board, but I think that's, I'm going to make a statement, I would assume staff would rather work with the commission as the, as the drainage commission, these board members versus having the board appoint the citizen board, is that the case?
Yes, because it would, then it would create another, so we'd have a planning commission, a drainage commission, and a Board of Commissioners.
All right.
I think with some of the development that's going on, and this board having, you know, making those decisions on rezones and other things, that it would be appropriate for this board to make those decisions, as well as you have the authority to have us get consultants to get information to provide to you to make those decisions. I think if you had a board, then we'd have to go to you to ask to get the consultant to go back to the, you see what I'm saying?
Correct.
It would make a very convoluted.
All right, so I agree, and so my, my input on this is I think it should be the Board of Commissioners, and you can already see in planning, which is set under statute, that, you know, we're the elected ones to make these tough decisions, and we appoint these boards, and sometimes we have appointed boards and we don't agree with those decisions, and some of that process doesn't allow that to come back to the commission for decision-making, and so I think that when we can, we should keep that in our hands.
I understand, so is there a timeframe to get the joint powers agreement signed from them?
We're hoping within the month, the next month, it should be signed.
Have they been introduced with it?
They have not, I'm working with Jay, there's a procedural issue that we're working on to make sure that everything is, as Commissioner Hadcock said, cross our Ts and dot our Is, just want to make sure that it's completely appropriate.
I think they did, Esther. Do you guys have any more questions on that?
No. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That was, that was awesome, I think we're heading down the right road there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Brittany, did we miss talking about nuisance ordinance and? You had started off before comprehensive plan, and there was a task force on the energy.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah, we did miss those two.
Oh, nuisance ordinance, yeah, we did, thank you.
With that one, we're just looking at some changes, we have a lot of issues, mainly in the valley of too many cars. That seems to be the big issue, and whether we have the authority to tow them off a street or on private property, so we're working to try to do that, but that seems to be the biggest rub with our nuisance ordinances, inoperable vehicles, too many vehicles, things like that. So that is something we're looking at updating in the nuisance ordinance, so it's just more of an update of kind of the things that our ordinance officer is dealing with. The other item that we're dealing with is hoarders. It's a difficult situation with hoarders, because it costs a lot of money to clean up those properties, and then they just bring it all back. There's a lot more to it than just a matter of cleaning up property, so if you do get complaints from citizens and things about that, that our ordinance officer is not doing anything, he is, it's just a very difficult process, because there's a lot more involved in that, because hoarding is much more than just a, an act, there's other issues usually that are involved with that. So with that, that's just some of the things that we're changing under the nuisance ordinance. As far as the alternative energy, we're still working through the task force, we're going to do another call for members, we asked for the continuance yesterday, Commissioner Dur, because you were not there, just to make sure that all the commissioners are here during that decision-making process, so that'll be at the March 4th Board of Commissioners
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you.
So on an average, how many nuisance complaints do you, does your office handle a year?
Over 100 at least, and we require written complaints, so it's not just, and it has to give a name and everything, it can't just be a neighbor, you know, this anonymous, because we have to actually be able to substantiate the complaint if it goes to court, but we probably have 60 to 70 open cases at any given time that we're working through, most of them are property cleanup type issues in the valley, is most of them.
In the valley, and then, so what do you do when you have a neighborhood, community that has covenants, and they don't want to enforce their own covenants, but somebody calls in a nuisance, how do you handle those?
It has to fall under the requirements of our nuisance ordinance, not their covenant, so if they don't want to enforce their covenants, then that's on them, we can only enforce what's in our nuisance ordinance. So we have a general standard, because it's really hard to look at things, we look at a neighborhood as a whole, and what's generally acceptable in that neighborhood, making someone clean up their property to a level of what an HOA would require if everyone else in the neighborhood isn't, so there's like a general acceptability, so we try to kind of go with that as our, our standard, because there's just some areas that, you know, are, you know, there's a general acceptability of a certain, certain things on their property.
Without naming locations, yes.
Yeah, so, and making someone do something more than what is generally accepted in the neighborhood just seems-
All right.
-inappropriate, so that's kind of our rule of thumb, so to speak, it's our policy, so.
Very good, good approach, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Brittany, I got one question for you. So if you got, if you have 100 complaints, and I know there's work that has to go through with every one of those, to process them, but how many of those do you substantiate as actually valid? Is it half of them?
Most of them are, if they are a complaint where someone actually will file a written complaint and have information. A lot of times there are things where, like, it happened over a weekend and we can't see it, so the ordinance officer will ask for pictures or videos and things like that, so to have evidence, but we have to substantiate it before he will even send a letter, so not all of them get notices, per se.
All right, good, thank you. Now I have a follow-up based on his.
Commissioner Dur.
So let's, okay, out of that 100, and you get down to that, how many of those do we actually take action upon, so if we go in and do civil action and do a cleanup, and if we do that, do we hire outside, or is it something, if we have to do something, does the Highway Department come in and help on cleanup?
So we have a abatement budget, so we hire, we have like three or four different companies that'll do abatements for us, so they'll give us a quote and do an abatement. We try not to do those too much, I only have the authority in our office to do up to $1,000, so if it's more than that, then that has to come to the board for abatement. A lot of the ones that we have, like our frequent offenders, so to speak, usually have to go to the State's Attorney's Office, so there's a few of those a year that actually go to court-
All right.
-and that are ordered to clean up, but we try to work with them as much as we can to make progress, so, because we have to show that they, they've made an attempt, that we've made an attempt to give them before we go to court, because usually they'll just make us go do that anyway, so.
All right, good.
Thank you. So I think we get back in order here, we're past the drainage, we're down to Rapid Valley Oh, the alternative energy task force, we talked about that, she talked about that.
Yeah, she just mentioned it.
Jersey, did you know we moved it to March 4th?
I haven't read it yet, but yeah, she just mentioned March 4th.
Okay.
And then down to Rapid Valley Infrastructure? That's Joe. You're an, you're an infrastructure guy, too?
Um, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department, just wanted, had the opportunity with all you guys here to, to point out some issues we're on, I know when we met here prior, we, I took you around Rapid Valley and showed you some of the issues, I'd like to do the same with Mr. Dur, I'm sure you're, you're aware of a lot of the issues out there, but we, just some things that we have that have been issues for, for longstanding. The issue of no man's land, I believe it's Valley Ridge subdivision number two, part of the DeGeest subdivision that the city annexed, there's a portion out there that is not in the city and is not in the county, neither one of us maintain the streets, there is a small road district there, I think it's, Dur, are you familiar, Commissioner Dur, are you familiar with where that's at?
Which one?
No man's land, out in the valley.
Pull it up, do you have a map?
We'll pull up Rapid Map here. So, I mean, this was, I believe it goes back to the 90s when this was originally built, there was an HOA that was required to be formed to maintain the streets, and then the HOA has been since dissolved, and nobody has picked up the street maintenance, the city annexed, so the DeGeest was actually in the same, the same scenario, and the city actually annexed DeGeest and the, the rest of that subdivision, but it still leaves one subdivision that is yet to be annexed, so you can see kind of the square here, this was annexed into the city, this portion here is, I believe if we go in here, this should be south, or Avenue A here, and so anything north of Avenue A, up to the city limits line here, is not maintained by the city and is not maintained by Pennington County. There is a small road district, the Tinton Road, Road District, that maintains Tinton Road and this small portion of Avenue A, so that leaves Hawkins, Pennington, and Avenue A, and then Z Box Street here that are not maintained. During blizzards or times of heavy snowfall, the county will go in and punch a, one way through that, so the, the citizens have a way in and out for emergency services if, if the need should arise, so that's an issue that needs to be, you know, it's continually brought up, has been brought up since long before I was here, Commissioner Wyffenbach has, has said that we can work with the city to try and solve some of these issues, but that's an issue out in the valley that needs to be addressed here as well. Any questions on that?
I have one question about Joe, and that is, have we ever done in the past, because we do road districts now, and we expect the people to take care of the roads through their HOA, their road district or whatever, obviously, have they been contributing to their road district on their taxes, or?
So the, the taxes for this actually go to the, an unorganized road- So, the, the taxes for this actually go to the, an unorganized road tax. So, I don't remember exactly what the levy is. It's a, I think it's a ten cents per thousand or something like that. It's very minimal, but that goes to the, the county highway. It's about three point three million dollars on average. The, there, I think it was about two years ago, Holly, when that individual was in, asking to be, an older lady. I don't remember what her name was, but what's that?
It's Carolyn Heeb.
Carolyn Heeb was in asking the county to, to take over these roads. And the, the commission at that time directed her to form a road district and we haven't seen it come back in front of the commission since. So, I'm not sure if that's the road they're going down or not. Commissioner Hadcock.
So, that's not the only lady. There's been many attempts from many people coming in, in the last years since I've been around. So, because of the sidewalk, the roads and the drainage, nobody wants them, is the bottom line. It's horrible. Like, you have gaps on sidewalks, roads that are splitting. The main thing is something needs to be done. I mean, what are we going to make it so it's so horrible that if we end up having to take it, or what are we doing with the city?
If I may there, Commissioner Hadcock?
Sure.
The, the last time we did a, an estimate, I think Bill Welk was our, our engineer at the time. It was about, I think, a year before Sean, or maybe you might have been there. But, at the time, it was about eight hundred thousand dollars to repair the roads from the, the state that they were in. So, I'm assuming that's, that's north of a million dollars now. You know, and the city doesn't want to, to do that. But, this is another issue with the three-mile plating jurisdiction, right? They, they allowed this to be platted. The HOA was formed at the time and then the HOA has been since dissolved by the residents. And no road authority has been taken since then. So.
So, that's another, actually, I wrote that down. Three-mile jurisdiction is, is a problem, especially in Rapid Valley. We're getting nilly willy all over the place. And like I said, we're inheriting a lot of the city's problems because they have plating. I remember at one time, Jason, you were talking about before they plat or they do something in the city for us to be able to approve it, or I can't remember the discussion with the plating on it. Because they're plating in our county areas that, as you see, we have to undertake later. I can't remember exactly the, the discussion, Jason, but it was about plating with the city coming in and, and being able to plat something that basically, at this point, we have no jurisdiction once they platted it. And then also, putting, they're not putting curbs, gutter, sidewalk. They're not having to do the infrastructure because they're putting in Rapid Valley. And I remember as a commissioner, or a city council person, we weren't going to put curb, gutter and sidewalk in the middle of Rap, or Rapid Valley when they did a development because what that was going to do for the drainage or basically the water that was going to come off that. So, is there any solution when they're doing that plating in the county of how we have any jurisdiction of what they do on their properties in the valley that's, again, affecting what's happening already out there?
So, Jason Thonis, Assistant Planning Director, I think you relatively summed up very well what the three-mile plating jurisdiction is and what the issues we have with that. The problem is that whenever they do this plating within that jurisdiction, they're subject to the city's subdivision regulations. We don't have anything to do with it, other than land use and the zoning, building permits, things like that. But, at the same time, they can go through the city council and get variances or exceptions, what they call them, to any of the requirements in their subdivision regulations. And the citizens don't have any say about that, and we don't either. So, as far as a solution to that, I don't have one at this time.
So, bottom line, that three-mile jurisdiction is causing Rapid Valley and the areas that are coming in to, again, causes some major issues. I don't know, me and Brittany at one time attempted to do the three-mile jurisdiction and work with the city and the mayor said at that time that they would work with us, but nothing came to fruition. I know there's some kind of state law with three-mile jurisdiction, I think, too, that we'd have to do something different. But, that three-mile jurisdiction is causing us some major issues in the county.
Absolutely. Yep. We would love to see that reduced in some way. They can, they can plat out to three miles is the, the maximum, but it, there's no minimum for them. It would be nice if there was some sort of an agreement that if they platted a certain area in that jurisdiction, that they would have to annex that within a certain amount of time. That would help us out greatly, and I think it would.
I think the best option would be if they're gonna, like you said, if they're gonna plat it, then they need to annex it. Because this is the problem that is. Do we have any process to assess, like a road improvement on this neighborhood? And then, just take it back? I mean, we fix the road and then we set up a road district that they have to pay for. At least the money's there to fix, do it. Or if we say, you know, this road's going to cost a million dollars, we're going to assess every house in this district to fix this road. Because somebody's got to get their attention to fix it. Because at least, I'm glad to hear that you're taking care of a, a safety hazard. If it's a health and safety hazard, you're stepping in and, and plowing them out. But, at some point, it's the city and the county are going to have to come to a resolution on this and fix it. Either they're going to have to annex it and fix it, which makes the most sense because we're really not in the business of handling, you know, urban, you know, areas. So. But, in the meantime, do we have a, do we have a place where we could assess this road? Like, say if it's a million dollars or something?
Sorry, Chair, if I may. I don't, Brittany, you made, I don't know if there's a, a road in, you know, I know there's a levy out there that we don't do with a road levy. Gary, maybe, I don't know if you can do that to a specific area or not.
I'm talking about, I know the city can do it. If, if your sidewalks are bad, they'll come in and fix them and they'll just assess it for it to you, and you gotta pay it. I don't see any other res, rev, I mean, we've been, we can keep dealing with it and dealing with it and dealing with it, or we can go in and fix it and assess the properties in the area and they're gonna, I don't know if the state's attorney wants to weigh in on that, or that might be something. I know I'm throwing a curveball at you right now. Maybe it's something we look at, did look at all the options away to, to fix this area because it is no man's land. And we are putting some people in somewhat of a danger zone if they're, you know. I'm glad to hear that you're taking care of the heavy snow, but, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiefenbach. At this point, I don't know that there is an option to do that as far as roads go. I can certainly look into it if that's what the commission would direct me to do. I can start doing some research on that.
I see no other alternative. If the city doesn't have control of the road and the county doesn't have control of the road, those people in that neighborhood have to have control on the road. No real difference in what we're doing with our, our, our nuisance ordinance. I mean, it, you can't ask the rest of the county taxpayers who are paying for their own roads to come in and pay for this road. You know, I mean.
Sure.
Commissioner Drew, thank you.
I think there, I think there is a statute out there that would allow us to put a levy on. But, I don't know if you can, I, I don't know if you can pick and choose of where you would put that levy. So, I, I think it needs to be researched to see what authority we may have and to what extent we can do something.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Dur.
So, yeah, you have a secondary road levy and you've got, getting back to this with the township, or with, not in this case, a township, but a road district. And a road district is something that the county can't form. And that has to be voted on by the people that live there. Basically, a road district, like a sanitary district, et cetera, is once formed, you know, they're their own little governmental entity. And so, they have the same, they have powers to, you know, levy and collect that money, et cetera. And so, my question would be, the existing, I'm assuming, the existing road district that is right next to this area does not want to annex this other area in. And the HOA, then it goes back to, and I guess it would be a question for Brittany. So, when these developers come in, and I'm assuming a lot of this stuff got, obviously, in Rapid Valley, you know, we're talking a long time ago, but developer agreements and some of those things, if we have control over, I'm assuming we've changed how that happens in the future. And some of this is just legacy issues that we're, you know, that we have to deal with at this point in time. And so, a developer just could not come in and then abandon the property, correct?
Brittany, go ahead.
Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. So, that actually comes through the plating jurisdiction through the city. So, those developer agreements are that. So, like Apple Valley is platted through the city. That's a developer agreement for them to have a road district. Same with Murphy Ranch. So, we only control the zoning and the building permits. You can't condition a zone, a rezone. So, we can't put any conditions that they have to do a road district or they have to do those things. Those are done through the subdivision regulations and those are under the authority of the city, not the county.
So, it would be whatever the city is putting on the developer for that infrastructure?
Correct.
All right. And then, we have to deal with it.
Chair. So, on the three-mile jurisdiction on plating, is that with, is that a three-mile rule from the state? Why do they get plating jurisdiction in the?
So, it's statutory and they can go up to three miles. So, they don't have to do three miles. They can go up to three miles. And it doesn't have to be like a big bubble. It could be a mile in certain areas or two miles in other areas where they may see their infrastructure. So, it's just that they do like a blanket three-mile all the way around.
Let me ask you a question. Once they annex in, does a three-mile change further out?
Yes. Yes.
So, they can keep, that's just crazy. I never thought about that because now they're coming into Rapid Valley and they're doing pieces and parts of Rapid Valley. Now, the three-mile's going out further. So, they're going to keep, causing us issues, the more that annexation changes. In one sense, we want them to annex in, right? But, the other, are they pushing it out so they can do more development in Rapid Valley at that point? And what does that cause us by agreeing with TIPS and agreeing with areas that they are annexing in? It's just going to cause us more and more issues moving forward.
Right. Commissioner Dur?
I was just going to say, I mean, yeah, this is what municipalities do. I mean, Box Elder, you can get back to, you know, many of the communities in the Black Hills area that fight for annexation. And they will, you know, lay a moniker out here and plant a flag so they can, you know, move a step further, move a step further. And, yeah, it's the counties that have to deal with this. So.
Correct. And we're running into that problem already with Box Elder. They're, Box Elder, but Box Elder's willing, more willing to annex than what Rapid City is. So, there's places where they're coming together and they're trying to figure out who's got jurisdiction. The county, Box Elder, or the city. So, and I've had the conversation a little bit with the city and they're going to argue with us on whether it's May or can, you know what I mean? So, on the three-mile. But, there's got to be some sort of consistency that we need to work out with. I'm assuming that we're gonna, if we can look into like doing a, a assessment, which would be fix the road and then let someone take it over because there's no sense of us trying to do it. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. And then, we, we're going to have to keep working on this three-mile. I think we're going to have to get together with their planning department and go, like I told Joe, these places are no man's land. We got to resolve these. These are, you know, we work for the people out there and, and they're struggling right now because people are buying these houses unbeknownst to them that they're in no man's land. And I get it. I mean, they have to do their due diligence, but realistically, you know, in the real world, that's not happening. And so, that's when we have to step in and we're going to do something. And if we've, if we force an assessment on them to fix the road, they're going to have to pay for it. And then, they're going to have to figure out how to do it. They're going to have to form their, their HOA back up and go, we need to fix our roads. Because the county's not in the, in the business to, to do these private subdivisions. That's why the city, when they plat it, are supposed to set this up. It gets set up. And then, it gets, like Jerry said, it's, here you go. County, you take it over. Well, that's just not going to work for us. So.
Part of the issue maybe with the drainage and they're affecting us, maybe that's a way to use some of that against them in a sense that if you want to move this forward, we want the infrastructure in order to take care of the county before we approve your drainage areas. Like I said, if you keep having developments, what you're doing is you're putting a bunch of housing units out and around in Rapid Valley without the infrastructure. You're also changing our whole comprehensive plan. So, it's not just us, when Jason probably did, redid his plating. It's the city doing that to us as well. So, they're going to make clusters of homes all over Rapid Valley with no commercial or neighborhood commercial. That's just crazy. Like I said, the Safeway is something I think we need to find some solution with because that's huge for Rapid Valley and we need that.
It's, it's annexed into the city, so you know that.
That's why I'm saying. So, we need to find some solution where that infrastructure will work. But, if that's how we have to stop them is through the drainage in some of the areas. Because I remember on a TIF that we just did on Enin Reservoir that was approved, the drainage is not going to be covered, covered enough in those areas up north, let alone, we already had a problem with that area. It's all coming and down to the racetrack, going down to where Joe's family and stuff live over by Murphy's Ranch. That area had huge infrastructure. We worked with SCULL to make sure those issues were above and beyond. Now, they're above and beyond and they're still not going to handle that. So, I, I ask people that are on the TIPS committees and different stuff, that's going to be huge, that when you approve those TIPS, that you are looking thoroughly at their drainage and their infrastructure and what they're approving. Because then, it goes to the city council, which they just let it go. So, then it starts affecting. So, anything you do on some of those committees are huge for what's going to happen for us in Pennington County.
Okay. I think we've hashed it over enough. I think we should just move on with some direction for you guys. It says, let's look at the drainage commission, because I think that'll give us a little bit of leverage when we're talking about. Commissioner Dur wants to add something here.
Yep. Do we have an agreement with the city on this three-mile? It's typically called a three-mile agreement?
No. The only agreement that we have with the city is on our stormwater because we have an MS4, which is a municipal separate storm service system. So, we actually have a permit through the state and the EPA for stormwater. That's the only agreement that we have.
All right. Mr. Chairman, typically, county governments and municipalities have an agreement about this three-mile jurisdiction. And in that agreement, it's, you know, you don't want to call it kind of a mutual aid agreement, but it's just an agreement that spells out the issues that we're talking about. And so, my suggestion would be that we work on drafting an agreement with the city to spell out some of these issues.
Perfect. I see exactly where you're going with it. That makes complete sense. So, that would be the other direction that we could work on an agreement for the three-mile jurisdiction. Maybe we could, if we know of some other communities that have that, we can look and see kind of how they're wording the verbiage in it to make sure that they handle what we need handled. Because if they're not going to change it, then we're going to have to come up with a better agreement that's in writing that gives us some pressure to stand.
Maybe Joe and Brittany and Alexa maybe can come up with something that they know. And you guys have been around looking at all these different areas, not only three-mile, but some areas that we can work with, with them. So, if you guys want to.
I know you guys have been working on it. So, what kind of timeline would you think?
I, I would, within the next probably year, I would say.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
The sooner the better because that would solve a lot of Brittany's problems because.
Absolutely. I just.
I mean, if we could, I don't know how it would fit in your priority, but it would fit pretty high and probably Brittany's priority. So, if we could get something together along with that drainage and we'll, we'll take it over to the city on our, on, you know, one of our meetings and, and we'll just start there and see if we can come to a good conclusion. I think that's a great idea. That way, there's a direction here. We're not just walking off and going, oh, that's a good discussion point, but nothing got done. So. That being said, is there any other questions on this item? No other comments? Okay. We can move on to the next one. Uh, other items for consideration?
Ron, I, I guess I have a couple more on the Rapid Valley infrastructure.
Oh, sure. Okay.
That I just would like to bring to you guys' attention. Some of the ones that, in your packet there that I handed out, and Holly's got a copy of that, the executive summary of our master transportation plan points out this intersection that was brought up here yesterday, Concourse and Twilight. Another intersection that is, is Jolly Lane and Forty-four, Twilight and Forty-four. And then, it also brings up the need for this connection between Twilight Drive and Radar Hill at some point in the future. That, you know, we, Commissioner Hadcock and, and our offices had conversations on that, trying to drive the, the development there. There, there's a couple hiccups or hurdles that need to be overcome. This, as you can see, this huge drainage here is, is one that we'll have to figure out how to get across this drainage with that road in the future when that, and that's something that the commission needs to decide. If the county wants to construct that or we want to wait for development to come through and, and construct that, you know, our funds are, are limited. So, there would need to be some sort of funding for that connection between Reservoir and Radar Hill Road. But, I think that's going to be vital for the, the growth of Rapid Valley and even Rapid City, right? For the citizens out there. That's where the development's going. The, as Commissioner Hadcock brought up, this little subdivision is already going in here. All this drainage is draining south down into Apple Valley. Some other intersection that I'd like to bring up is this intersection here at Reservoir and Longview. Not all of these are, are going to be traffic signals, but more turn lanes, right-hand turn lanes, stuff like that. Roundabouts or, or something else that we, we would like to explore for those issues. Trying to, off the top of my head here, I had a whole list. Now, I can't remember it. So, am I missing anything, Sean? Those are kind of the main issues in Rapid Valley. And all of you, I think, are probably aware of the fourteen sixteen and Radar Hill intersection. probably aware of the, the fourteen-sixteen and Radar Hill intersection issue that is Box Elder, Pennington County, Rapid Valley issue. Um, it's something that we're working on here, uh, with Box Elder to, to try and come up with something to get that intersection improved. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
If you get into any of those meetings with Box Elder, I'd like to attend with you, just so.
Absolutely. I know we, uh, Box Elder, um, sent us an agreement here early, early this year, uh, requesting to take over jurisdiction of fourteen-sixteen, um, for a sum of, I believe it was twenty million dollars over the course of, or ten million dollars over the course of twenty years.
They wanted you to take it over, they wanted the county?
They wanted them to take it over, but we wanted, they wanted us to pay them a sum of ten million dollars over the course.
Scratch that out, initial it, and send it back to them?
That, that's exactly what we did. Um, we had Tyler, I don't know if he's in here still or not, but, uh, I don't think Alexa's kinda, uh, privy to that agreement. Tyler had been working on that, but, um, we believe that, uh, fourteen-sixteen should be for, Box Elder's already, um, so we're trying to work with them to, to get that jurisdiction transferred over, so.
Most of what you're talking about is covered in your...
A lot of it is, yep.
Executive summary of, uh, this is your executive summary of your master transportation plan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Question for Joe.
Commissioner.
So Joe, uh, we talked briefly about this yesterday, but signal lights are easy for people to come in and, and request and ask for at these intersections and so forth, um, but they don't recognize what the expense is for us. Can you just kinda give us a preliminary idea of what these signal lights cost when they, if we do have to put them in?
Um, you know, like if we, if there was one to go in at Concourse and Twilight, um, you know, that's gonna probably be a, a four-legged intersec, or, uh, signal, um, it's cost anywhere between a half a million and three-quarters of a million dollars to put one in, not including the right-of-way that would likely need to be bought, um, 'cause, you know, I don't know that the, the right-of-way is there, um, for those signals to go in, so you're looking at probably buying houses at that point, um, or sections of property on already small lots. Um, so I don't know exactly what that looks like. I've never had to buy a house for right-of-way. We've bought right-of-way on, on, uh, roadways, but, uh, that's, I'm guessing that's going to add significantly to your cost, um, to put a, a signal in there. You know, it's just, it's not, it wasn't planned, right, so the, the right-of-way's not there.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
Joe, will you go back to Longview, where that drainage is?
Uh, so, you're talking on Apple Valley, Murphy Ranch, where you, where you...
Valley, Apple Valley.
What's that?
Apple Valley, where the drainage comes off of.
Right here?
Yep. Um, is that where the bridge is, where it comes down from the north into Apple Valley?
Uh, I'm not familiar with the bridge, I guess.
Okay, the bridge is on Longview, that we're not...
The culvert?
Um, where we're not going to, should be further down on Apple Valley, you're gonna go to Reservoir Road from Apple Valley, from the drainage?
So there's a culvert underneath, uh, right here.
Is that where, like, the development from the city, from, uh, the new developer's gonna do up north? Do you understand where I'm going?
I don't know where you're at. I...
Okay, so you're on Longview and Apple Valley.
The culvert at Murphy Ranch, yeah, that, I mean...
Nope. Nope, it was Apple Valley where there's a big drainage area that's coming right into Apple Valley, and it's coming through it.
Yeah, that's, that's this entire, um, I mean, Enin's, it's Enin's property right now, um, so this is the Enin subdivision, right, this little chunk of, uh, what the city's just recently annexed. Um, you can see the entire drainage, the hill, this drainage starts probably right, right in here-ish is the top of the hill. Um, so that's another thing with the Drainage Commission, um, we do need to convene another drainage study, right, to, um, study from Reservoir to Radar Hill, um, and study this area, because this is what's gonna get developed in the near future.
It's over by Longview and Reservoir Road where Apple Valley is, please, not Enin.
Yeah, the only thing I'm aware of that's any sort of structure would be...
Blow up your map, please, um, Joe, of all the area, all the way to Reservoir, and then show me where Reservoir Road is.
Reservoir's here.
Not Reservoir, I'm sorry. What's the...
This is Radar.
Radar Hill, I'm sorry.
This is Radar.
Okay, see the drainage?
Anderson.
So the right of that line that you just showed, the white line, um, on Radar Hill Road, can you see the drainage to the right? Blow it up, if you would, Joe, right around that area. Blow it up more, so you can see. The drainage is all coming to Apple Valley in that whole area, and there's an area on the TIF that we did not approve on that TIF, and it's right through that bridge area or culvert where the lower area is there, where all the drainage is coming through?
So, I mean, the, yeah, it goes back to this whole from Radar Hill, or Reservoir to Radar, the drainage starts clear back up here, right, and it all comes down, and it funnels, there's part of it that funnels through, uh, Murphy Ranch here. There's a big culvert, um, you can see the drainage here. I don't remember, Sean, do you remember what size that culvert is that goes under Longview?
Joe, I get where you're going. I'm talking to the right, where you can see the drainage. What I'm saying is, if you don't put any riprap, if you guys don't put anything in there, I don't know if you guys seen it, but you can go behind, um, Tower Road, and you can see where that's gonna open up, and it's gonna come towards all this development over here. And, um, that drainage, if you look in that area where it's already, already developed, and then it's coming into Apple Valley, um, that road piece, if I'm correct, was not in the TIF, let alone that drainage area, um, goes underneath that, that's not in the TIF. So that's gonna be affecting some major areas in that area, and I'm gonna tell you, if you look at it, it's gonna open up that drainage huge for the people coming. Just go look at it now, if you don't believe what I'm, I'm saying. I went and looked at it like three times already, and it's, for me, it's freaking me out, because all that water, all that drainage is gonna start opening up, and it's gonna go into Apple Valley. It's gonna affect the people downstream, and, uh, we only covered the TIF to a certain area for infrastructure, and that area is not covered. So what I'm saying is, I think it's something that's, um, pretty important, because they are annexing above it, and it's all coming into the valley, or it's com, coming into Apple Valley and those areas below. Um, I think it's pretty unfair at this point that we did not look at that when we were doing the TIF of what that, uh, drainage is going to do for the future of that area, um, and that's an area you wanna develop for a lot of people. You have four-hundred-and-sixty-seven houses that are gonna go in that square over by that drainage, guys, and that's gonna affect, 'cause it also has a spring that's in that corner of, uh, the east side of that corner by Apple Valley. So you not only have water from a drainage area on this, on this Apple Valley, you also have a major drainage area coming at them, and then they're developing above it, so...
Excuse me, um, Commissioner Haddock, um, Joe, can you show us where Apple Valley is on that map?
It's these three squares right here.
That big square right there?
This square, this square, this square.
Okay, so the drainage does right to...
I don't think, that one, that one's not included, right?
That one?
So it's just these three forty acres right here.
Okay, so the, the drainage does go right through the middle of it, huh?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and it, it goes out to the, the east here, into this, uh, this one here. I believe, I, I spent a long time since I've looked at that, the, the site plans for Apple Valley, but they did, at our request, put in some, some retention ponds to retain the stormwater coming off of the streets from Apple Valley. Um, like I said, it's been a long time since I've looked at it. But Commissioner Haddock, you're correct, the, the road improvements for Longview stop about right in front of the Hayward's, uh, right here, um, is about where they stop, um, and then that was where the water and sewer stopped also, and that's the reason that the, the, uh, the road improvements were stopped at that point, is because that's where the road and, or, excuse me, the sewer water improvements stopped, because that's kind of a low point for the sewer, um, they couldn't push it any further, um, to the east, so all the stuff...
Funny. How does Apple Valley hook up to that, then?
Uh, Apple Valley comes down Anderson.
Comes down, okay.
And then goes under forty-four.
Gotcha.
To the, the, um, the sewer plant.
Well, the DA and NR actually had to step in on the spring, because they didn't think it was gonna be a water issue, um, when they did the TIF, and then they had to come in and tell them that they had to do a study on it, uh, because of the neighbors. But again, with that study, um, I'm concerned that we are, we are putting in infrastructure, putting in things that actually, um, we spent a lot of money on, and to put roads and stuff in there with some drainage, major drainage, actually not one, there's two coming at it. So, um, how's that gonna affect, um, the TIF that we just put in, and to be, um, allow for enough drainage and the, remember I said, when you oversize or you put development in, and you're gonna be affecting the next development? That's an area where, um, like I said, we put a TIF in, but I don't think we put enough money in that TIF to do a drainage that's gonna, um, basically protect the people that are in that...
From anything?
Development or coming downstream.
Well, anything that happens up above, and Brittany, correct me if I'm wrong, they'll, they'll have to meter that? Will they, I mean, they'll have to meter anything above? And did they meter in, uh, in Apple Valley too? Did they meet, did they have metering dams there too? Or were they not required?
Well, they have detention facilities, but the, the issue is, is that there's still more water, so it drains longer.
Longer. So the problem that we got is just gonna be longer now, supposedly. I've seen where that doesn't work too, where it just, it does. Okay, so that makes sense. Okay, so this is something that our Drainage Commission will be able to control in the past, so let's, I mean, unless there's any other questions, we'll move on.
Well, that's, that's why I'm bringing up some of this stuff, because we're talking about drainage, we're talking about areas. Um, Rapid Valley is the biggest area, I believe, in our county's past infrastructure and stuff.
No, I agree, I think, I think we've all, we've all understand that now really well. So, um...
I'm just making sure.
No, I get it.
Chair, that Jerry and everybody else has to know about the, the future of where that drainage and what that means, and where he has to look at for the future with...
That's the nice thing about reconvening this commission and only having us control it, then we're not having to worry about everybody else getting involved in it, and we can look out for our constituents, so, perfect. Um, is there more items on your Rapid Valley infrastructure?
No, those are the highlighted items. Again, those are in the executive summary that you have in front of you, so, um, if you have any future questions, uh...
No, perfect, I mean, we, you know, Joe's an open book, you can, I've stopped in his office, Brittany, open book, stopped in her office, and I appreciate you guys being straight up with me, and, and, and we addressed what we gotta address going forward. I think we're gonna be diligent with it, we're not gonna back down from the, the bureaucracy of it. We're gonna commit to you guys to try to get, to answer these questions. I know it gets frustrating, I don't think a year's time, I think that's too long. I think it's, we can shorten that up if we, if we all delve into this together, and, and, you know, we're just gonna go straight to the, the horse's mouth over there and, and tell them this is what we're gonna, we're gonna do, otherwise we're gonna have to get some litigation going, because it, we can't keep putting, I know, I'm in Murphy Ranch, I got property in there, and then I know across there with, uh, the Lams and the Andersons over on Dolly Lane, they're furious about what's happening, and they're a key to the city, so we can work with them and, and get what we need to accomplish. So I appreciate you guys. Any other questions on this? Okay, we can, like I said, this, uh, Jerry, do you have a question?
No, I'm just waiting for other items for consideration.
We're ready for other items, so...
So that means, don't move.
Jerry, you've got the floor on other items, my friend. So go, go ahead.
All right. New Underwood Road. So I see, uh, you know, Mead County has been trying to get New Underwood Road, you know, they're twenty-nine and change miles on, uh, taken over by the state, and there were some talks over the last few years about pushing, uh, you know, some agreements, the county was gonna take over service roads, et cetera, in exchange for that, and now I see there's a big push and a letter-writing campaign, they're trying to get citizens to have some input on, and so going for a grant to get some of that stuff done through the, uh, South Dakota DOT. So with our little section of New Underwood Road north of New Underwood, uh, what, what can you tell us about where that's at, or what, uh, what partnership, if any, that Pennington County is taking with Mead on this venture?
So, um, Gary, I believe you were a part of this conversation too. Um, so, uh, from my understanding of what happened, um, this is the closest that that agreement's ever gotten. Um, it's been talked about for years, um, to have the state take over New Underwood Road. Um, the, they were so close as to the, the, Mead County was going to take over a lot of offshoots off of, um, Sturgis Road, um, and maintain Sturgis Road, um, and then they were the, in the meantime, they were going to maintain both, right, for a period of five years, I believe, while they were pursuing the application or the, the procurement of a raise grant, um, through the federal government. The state was going to help write that grant and apply for that grant on behalf of Mead County, I believe. Um, the state approached us, 'cause they weren't going to take over New Underwood Road without all of it, right, all of it north of New Underwood, um, or north of I-90, excuse me. And we were in agreement with that, um, for the most part. The part that we did not agree with was the state wanted us to then take over part of Sturgis Road from the city of Rapid City line, uh, which is about Saint Martins, um, a little bit south of there, I believe, about a mile south of there is where the city limit, uh, is, all the way to Mead County. Um, and on that stretch of road, I believe, if that were to happen, that, that road would be the highest traveled road under Pennington County jurisdiction. I think it's an ADT of about fifteen or eighteen thousand cars a day, um, along with a structure that was about three-hundred-and-thirty feet in length, um, and another, there's two box culvert, one's is Pete Leans for their conveyor, so that's completely their cost, um, and then the other one is a box culvert that, uh, I don't remember exactly the size or when it was constructed, but, um, we went out and had some, uh, had Avid Four do some cost estimation for us on a life cycle cost, and then we had KLJ do a life cycle cost for us on the bridge structures, um, to see what those were actually going to cost us, 'cause, uh, if I remember right, Sean, the number, do you, do you remember what the number the state wanted us to pay them to do this was? Yeah, I don't remember. It was an astronomical number that the state was requesting from Pennington County to make this happen, um, and my approach was, we didn't ask for this, right? We didn't ask for this agreement. We agree with that road going to the state, but it shouldn't be on the backs of Pennington County taxpayers. Um, to offload is something that is largely in Mead County, and then it's going to be a benefit to the state as well. Um, so that's kinda where that, uh, as far as I know, left. Um, the, I believe Mead County blew that deal up. I'm not exactly sure of the reasoning, or if that's factual or not, but, uh, I haven't heard anything of the agreement for probably about a year. Gary, do you know anything else?
I haven't heard anything. Ted, uh...
Seaman.
Ted Seaman was the contact on the commission. Uh, I haven't had any contact with Ted now for months.
All right. So, yeah, former Senator Gary Kamak and Galen Niederwerth are, uh, are taking the lead on this, and so there's a letter-writing campaign being pushed out, you know, in Mead County, and then obviously I know the state wants the whole thing, you know, and to include our section if they're gonna take it over, so I guess I would ask that, you know, maybe you would reach out to Mead County Highway Superintendent to find out what the status is?
Yeah, I can certainly reach out to Troy and see, see where the status is. Um, I don't know that it's changed since the last I talked to him, but I'll definitely reach out, um, and see if that's in fact where the, the, uh, the agreement is, so.
All right.
Thank you. Any other considerations, Commissioner? None? Any from the public, or... How about the staff? We worry out. That's good. Um, I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys, for an awesome meeting.